Hey. Welcome. Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 1:00 PM Monday, May 1st, 2023. I don't know. Well, so we're not having a meeting on Wednesday. So we're going to go through a process here for citizen input and the items on the agenda. Please join us. Just state your name.
Greg Bryant from Deschutesboro Woods. And my comment is the fact that the planning commission position for Tumalo, you're having one for that position. And then my question is, if you're having a position for there, why isn't there one for Deschutesboro Woods, Terrebonne, maybe Alphata, Woodside, and some other locations? Because you know, Tumalo is a small populated area, but you know, I'm just asking the question, why aren't the other ones? I know you have seven positions, you know, that would increase it to maybe 10 or 11. So that's my question.
Great, thank you very much. So yeah, I don't know that we're gonna respond to that right now, but I want to thank you for that input.
Yes.
Yeah, point taken.
We used to have nine, historically speaking, we did have nine. So I think that's what I learned in my research, like a long time ago.
Okay, fun. You know, with the RDB has got almost 6,000 people and compared to Tumalo of 600 in their, in Tumalo proper, I know they got more than that in their area, but that's my question.
Thank you. There is a real need to think about where all the population is in the county and ensuring that people have equal representation across the county in, in the planning commission and in other ways.
Yes.
Jared, I just may offer just one suggestion, not to give you a discussion, but you might want to raise it in the comprehensive plan update discussions. Just so they have, you might want to raise it in the comprehensive plan because the comprehensive plan sets the framework for the citizen involvement advisory committee, which is the planning commission of the county. That kind of sets out the boundaries of it. So if you suggest it in that process, then it's something the board should consider at a later time.
Okay, well, okay, I'm busy on other stuff.
Thank you very much.
Send a quick note in for cop plan input.
Okay, anybody else? Is there anybody online? So we'll throw the raised hand feature and. Okay. So at this time, next item will be consented agenda. So we do have a legislative seven minutes.
We'll vote for consent agenda.
A second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. Jared.
Yes, I was actually not present on that meeting for 21st, so I'm not sure if I should be voting or not.
Well, I'll second it then, to confirm that, yeah, you weren't. In fact, yeah, I guess.
I was the only one there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you weren't there either.
So. The couple of came pretty quick there, didn't they, over the week? Well, so we'll just acknowledge that. So yeah, so in the middle of a vote, do you vote yes?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also. Thank you. So item number two, roundabout art proposal. U.S. 20 and OP Riley and Cook.
I'll check. Come on up and talk to the board for a minute.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Chris Stewie, Department Director. As noted in the staff report for this item, ODOT is supplying a minimally landscaped center island within the roundabout under construction in Tumalo at present. Although dot does not endorse art, propose art within the roundabouts. They do permit it, as has been the case in Primeville and in Sisters, you've seen the art in those locations. However, that occurs through an IGA with a local jurisdiction. So in this case, it would be Deschutes County rather than a city per se. Through the local jurisdiction. Within Tumalo, a grassroots group has formed to pursue installation of the roundabout of art within the roundabout that's under construction. It's my pleasure to introduce Liz Aker and Whistle, who have developed a concept and they're really excited to show the board the concept that they feel really represents Tumalo. But with that board, you know, there are some items to consider. And we're talking about art in the county, you know, basically being responsible for it via an IGA and an agreement with ODOT. So items of concern would be maintenance, of course, a long-term maintenance, maintenance that would need to happen if it were to be damaged by a vehicle, which is, you know, not uncommon in the roundabouts. Liability, a part of that process, ODOT will, you know, basically be placing that liability upon us through, will be indemnifying ODOT essentially. And then, of course, anytime you're talking about art in the public space, the community process, you know, and how, you know, art was picked for that. So with that, Cody Smith is actually back at the home office. Has a video queued up that Liz and Anne prepared. And I'm just gonna turn the presentation over to you and see if Cody can share his screen and get that thing rolling.
Great.
You're staring at me like you're worried or something.
I don't know if Anne was gonna go first or I was gonna go first. Yes, we are. All right. Cody, can you put a pause on that, young man?
Do you hear us?
I think so, yeah.
Maybe if he holds for, well, you're welcome to put that up. We'd like to just take a few minutes to give you a little bit of background. Thank you for your time this afternoon. Happy May Day. It's nice to have grassroots effort here during May Day. Our team, at first, I'd like to introduce us and other members of our team. Take a few minutes to share our vision, the design and approach that we're taking. And then we're really here to ask for your guidance and permission to move forward. First, our team, Imane Witzler, I'm a Tumalo resident, farmer, business owner, and I live on White Rock Loop. Liz Aker Willard lives on Swally and is a Tumalo resident as well, horse owner. And other members of our team include Chris, he's been an advisor for us throughout. Emerald Shirley, who is a member of ODOT's senior transportation management. She is the senior transportation manager for ODOT. Abby Driscoll was guiding us towards Chris. She's still involved as an advisor. She is Deschutes County Commissioner in traffic as well. Mel Stout, you may have met him previously. He is a landscape architect, former resident neighbor of Tumalo. And Bob Barco, who is recently retired from Tumalo Irrigation District. I mean, Bob, he's got a lot of relics that are helping us, that's giving us options. So our vision was really to have a roundabout for Tumalo that meets all of ODOT and Deschutes County requirements and reflects Tumalo's unique character, history and nature. We also feel that the roundabout is maybe the most visible and first exposure to Tumalo that passersby may have. So for us, it's, it's nice to have something reflect the character of that area. Our, our vision also says something low cost, easily maintained and enjoyable, but also inclusive. So our design has been simple. It reflects, the concepts have come up, that come up through discussions with a lot of people, including the public review process that took place earlier just about having a roundabout versus an underpass there. We got a lot of comments from the public about what they would like to see or not see. We've also had lots of one-on-ones with business owners and residents around the area. But the concepts are really simple. It's really looking at the agricultural history of Tumalo and the nature of Tumalo. So it's, I, you could call it art. I think it's more reflective of the, of the unique character and position of Tumalo. So we think it's really inclusive that way. Not much to be offended by, we don't think. Always an option, I guess. So our approach has been, as I mentioned, we've learned a lot from others. So many rotaries have been installed in the surrounding areas. We've learned from the people involved with those about their processes. Some are much more extensive and elaborate than ours. Sisters Redmond, the one that's on Old Benmerman Highway in Tumalo, didn't really have any enhancements, but it's a good, and we're aware of all those different options. Brian Markham, so our process included talking with a lot of the folks involved with those, including Marceline Chorhio, who's been involved with the City of Bend's road and roundabouts, which are much more elaborate than what we're proposing. Brian Markham, you know, is the contractor, a construction company that's involved with constructing the Tumalo roundabout. And he's been helpful, not only in with design, but timing of everything. So we're trying to, we're coming to you now because the timing is, you've moved in fast on these rotaries, which is really terrific. We want to make sure that we're not holding up any process if there's an installation of something that needs to happen at a certain time. Brian's been really helpful for that. So moving forward, really, our design options will show you. We have run them by a number of different people. Mel Stout was very involved with helping design these. And as I mentioned, he's designed the signage posts that are on either side of Tumalo, on the north and south entrances of Tumalo. And he has the profession of being able to do that, which is terrific. Again, we're just tracking all the timelines and the processes for ODOT and Deschutes County. So we're abiding by your regulations, some of the visibility placement, timing of installation, et cetera. Meeting with you to get your approval and support. We will have a little bit more of a formal public review process pending your approval to move forward in early May. And we have to finalize the plans and then confirm again the timing and placement and installation. Really, that's it. We're here to share our thoughts with you, get your input and guidance and hopefully your approval to move forward. Now, Cody.
Cody, hit it. This, this two-minute video will help share our plans with you. The images will help you visualize the finished product. Wheel lines, did you even know what wheel lines were before you came to Central Oregon? Tumalo signs were designed and built by Mel Stout, 2003. Incorporating wheel lines and natural elements.
I forgot.
That's okay, that's okay. The roundabouts are everywhere. Yes, they are. Any moment now, the roundabouts are everywhere. They range from plain to elaborate. They save lives, they reduce pollution, and they're here. It's a little blurry. The Primeville BLM has given us juniper to split and form rock cribs, split rail fences. Many of Deschutes County trailheads use these features. Split juniper was crucial to early farming pioneers. My favorite, of course, always, always. Just a little, little thing, the wheel lines. No, they're not abandoned bicycle wheels. Wheel lines are ubiquitous to hay fields. And our wheel line segment would be cemented piece and fixed to the base. They are aluminum, antique hay rake. Again, engineered to the base. To proposed, to the features. Ever-popular ditch and fence ladder for hopping fences and ditches. I passed you out all a copy of Mel's ideas. Nothing's carved in stone, except the stone that the contractor will leave. So thank you very much for considering us. And I don't know if this looks familiar to you, but I would like to see one very soon from all of you. It's an approval. Thank you.
Like the county administrator's signature on that one?
And it's Tom Anderson, county administrator. How long ago was that?
Depends on how, yeah, I don't know. It must have sprayed here. The very time you left, a window.
There's a window.
I'm gonna assume that's probably for the existing.
Yes, that was for the original ones. We'd like to see another.
So we're currently, jurisdictionally, jurisdictional authority that went to our approval to that at some point in the past.
So it's an ODOT project in, ODOT, by the way, in our community, and we're the local jurisdiction that would partner with the community to put our, in a, in a roundabout. I'm just thinking, you know, what are the business case here? And then, you know, setting something in place, then, you know, either maintenance, an accident or vandalism, you know, how do we deal with the variables that kind of are around that? So I think, you know, that's kind of the business case we learned today, partnership.
Yeah, and I didn't, I really didn't mention that our, one of our visions we got did is to keep this really low cost. So we don't have a huge fundraising desire. We certainly can do it. We have people lined up to contribute. And, and if needed, we're really hoping that a lot of our, the artifacts, the agricultural things are donated. We have our eyes on a lot of them, and so we're working that angle.
You could put little brass plies on.
Donated by?
Yes.
No, you can't.
I don't think you can.
Hold on, chapter 16, page 35, no lettering unless it's off the roundabout.
Really, even cheating?
You know, then they'd have to break to look at it.
There may be another place we could put some acknowledgements in town of the people.
We've been told, let us know what you need, we're willing to help. We'll see what happens when push comes to shove.
Oh, I love what you guys have done. So I'll be driving through it every day and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's perfect.
Well, I think Mel's ideas and Liz's and everyone's, it's all come together. So with maintenance, we really are still working on that ongoing maintenance. I've done similar very large-scale projects in the Portland area previously, and we've worked with the surrounding businesses. And they've all really enjoyed being involved with ongoing maintenance, whether it's litter or whatever, whether we, we're working on that right now and hope that happens. Don't have all the answers buttoned up yet, sorry.
Well, and it's, it's like we're starting a partnership and it'll basically be there forever. So it's really setting it's up for the next, the next people that will.
That's right.
Who's gonna fix that or who's gonna clean that up? Well, the plan is, according to this piece of paper, you know, that's.
That's exactly right. Thank you. Yes, right. We, we realize that, and so we're still working on that. So maintenance for us is huge contributions are what we're hoping for. We do have backup fundraising plans. And as I said, we'd love to go the next step to have a little public gathering at the Tumalo cider company. They're ready to host us and have everybody involved to just look over the plans and, and enhance in some way. But we thought we'd come to you first.
So then, when you're talking about not making it, making it inexpensive, is there kind of an estimate already of costs or?
We need to get engineering requirements, and that's really gonna be our costs to secure things so that they are not, that they're secure.
Building them into a display, static display.
Yeah. But otherwise, it's pretty low maintenance. Even, you know, everything, I think, it just has to be engineered in the right way. And that's where Markham is really gonna be helpful, helping us do that.
I think the elements that you just described are really great. I mean, those are historically significant pieces of, of the history of this area. Still, as you were describing it, it almost struck me like we were talking about a museum exhibit. And, you know, in some ways, like, you know, it's, yes, it's artistic, but I mean, they, you know, these are, you know, some of the things you described are artifacts, basically.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, I've had the chance to work with, with some, you know, people in museum settings in the past. And they're, they, they put a lot of thought into how long someone is going to stop and look at, look at a display in the way that they put it together, you know, kind of, it can be busier when there's, when someone's gonna stand for a long time and, and look at something. But we're talking about a roundabout where people are gonna be driving through, you know, like 30 miles an hour in some cases. I, I, so that was my one concern is like, is this a little too busy for how much, how much of someone's visual attention span you, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna have? And I, so I'm wondering if you, if you have people like that, you know, landscape architects or, you know, like museum curators, people like that who are, are helping to advise you on kind of like the right amount of elements, you know, for the amount of.
For the space and time.
For the amount of.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the amount of, you know, visual attention span that you get.
That's a really good question. And I think one is, we want to make sure we're adhering to visibility requirements that you have. So we will not have things tightly jammed to even, to impede any kind of sight from, you know, visibility from either side. But on your, on the density part, you know, Mel, I don't know if you know that Mel Stout was married to Marcia Stout, who was involved with the historical museum for decades. And I know he's thought a lot about that in the design that he's come up with. We're not planning to use all.
The pillars are very, you know, it's a very.
They'll be short.
Or, no, the, the, the pillars, the, with the, with the wheel lines, that's like very, it's a very simple design. But again, it's got a lot to it.
Yes.
Um, and.
That doesn't stop traffic, I don't think.
No. Right, but, but this, this, this sounds more busy to me than, than that.
So the artifacts that we've showed, maybe we should explain that not all of those will be used. They're examples of what we're considering, of what's been offered. Bob's been really good about, Barco has been very good about going around and slews through and get the best options. So your point's well taken. I think the design that you have in front of you from now has it pretty well spaced out. But we're open to that and we'll certainly keep that consideration. I think there'll just be one hay rake or one small tractor or plow. And then it's gonna be the posts, the stones and posts, the juniper posts that Liz was talking about, the ladder.
I promise it won't look like my neighbor's backyard. But that's what you're concerned.
People keep it really open, but we can run the final design, definitely will run the final design by you.
Yes.
Well, I mean, but that's what we talked about today. I mean, would you, would you want us in a decision space there? Or, because I think of it as a roundabout art has been talked about for a long time. There's, there's value in having the, the curbs around a roundabout, you know, something to, to know that the roundabout's coming too, you know, because especially the first week it's open when people are like, oh yeah, this used to be straight through. And I think that happened at Ward Hamby, didn't it? We had a big truck.
It hasn't been straight through for quite a while.
Yeah, but we had a truck go on its side pretty quick, right?
Went right through the middle of it.
So yeah, what you're referring to is called the terminal of this stuff. It's primarily for nighttime.
Yeah.
Also, it's a, you know, you have some of the breakup headlights.
Yep.
And that, that lets people know.
And see that it's there, if you've been down that road.
But you'll be doing that, that's your construction discussion, right?
Right, everything you're proposing adds to that. ODOT's fine with what they've designed, which is pretty minimal, very similar to Ward Hamby.
Well, so I was just getting, you know, who's, who gives a final blessing here? I mean, you're saying you want us to look at it, but I.
So ODOT has specific requirements on materials. So they'll, they'll bless one aspect of it from the safety standpoint. But ultimately, it's the local jurisdiction that is, you know, has its name on it. That, you know, wants nothing to do with the debate of art and its value. And so I, I think the biggest thing is that you're comfortable with the process that's being described here to know that, that what comes out of this is what the community has some consensus around. And, you know, we can all think of the roundabout art in this community that has generated a lot of conversations over the years, right? So some, some generate a lot, some don't. You know, I, what, what they're describing here is, is probably fairly acceptable to the majority of the community members.
So I was just thinking procedural-wise, you're proposing community meeting, kind of sharing with the community a little bit of fundraising to get things mounted professionally. Design that definitely, and then it'll come back to Board of Commissioners meeting. Undervaled, celebrate, finalize, is that kind of the idea?
I think, do we need a permit?
Yeah, so the county needs a permit from ODOT, but we also need an intergovernmental agreement that kind of stipulates just the art aspect of it, that permits our ability to work in the right way. The IGA is, hey, you're, you've got this thing now that you need to operate, maintain, indemnifying liability-wise. And, and certainly that, that is an item of concern. You know, given the fact that as it stands today, we have no ownership in any of that. We're taking on the ownership as the county. What's our comfort level with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, any concerns? I mean, it's an exciting project and this is the beginning of it, so we'll just work our way through the business case.
What, what is the maintenance plan or who's, like, who's signing up for that?
Yeah, and I think it really depends on what we finally arrive at in terms of the artifacts or the pieces on the site and how they're installed. But as we mentioned, we've been working with Markham Construction because they're gonna be putting that big boulder in place there. And they will be very involved with the engineering of how things are attached. We're, again, hoping that's gonna be donated. We will have to see as we move forward what they cover, what we cover in terms of fundraising. We're not asking you for money. We're, we're really just asking for your blessing. And, and involvement as we move forward. But our timeline is such, is driven by ODOT and, and the contractor. We don't want to miss the window for installing things when it's most convenient for them. So we're trying to get our ducks in order now. And if there's anything we need from you, like a permit now even to just to have the contractor install things, then we should probably ask for that now.
Answer your question, Commissioner Chang. We're hoping that we're not gonna have a lot of maintenance. We will have it fully insured for the replacement cost. None of this replacement cost is huge, but we understand that maintenance doesn't end when I do. Maintenance goes on forever. So we're gonna have to find a maintenance program. And perhaps we can go back to art in public places. Marcelina was very helpful. And it would be more economical to ensure replace. So we will have a maintenance plan.
Yeah, I mean, you know, like I've, I've built rock cribs and, and, you know, juniper lasts a long time, but not forever. You know, when, when a, when a post rocks out and the rocks start falling out, like, what's the plan for somebody to come in? You know, come and rebuild it, you know, metal, or, you know, pieces of metal equipment. You know, they get rusty and they, they, you know, they can fall apart.
Really good points.
There's, yeah, I mean, you know, I'm, maybe I'm thinking like 10, 20, 30 years, but, but like, you know, long-term, long-term maintenance plan. It may be good to have a, I, I just would love to have a sense of, you know, how, you know, this, this, this display will, will be maintained over the long term.
If we find that an item that we want to use has a shelf life of 10 years, maybe we should consider omitting it. If that's, that was my plan for the wheel line, to pack it with concrete. Aluminum lasts forever until it's crushed, hence the concrete in the middle. Markham's also gonna work with us with putting bases, engineering bases, concrete footings that we can attach the pilings with, the posts with, as well as the hay rake, or if we choose not to use the hay rake, if it looks too busy, like a junkyard, we can leave that out. Can't do anything without your permit.
I'm, I'm comfortable with, with proceeding with a permit. I'm, I'm just trying to think about all the contingencies.
And we understand that it's 20 miles an hour for wind speed. Is, is that still correct? Has anything changed with climate changing or anything like that? 20 miles an hour wind speeds. Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chris.
We'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay. And you had a question?
Are we making a decision about anything today or is this just consensus to proceed?
So what I'm gathering is that you're comfortable enough that I can maybe start the process with ODOT. So what what I'm gathering is that you're comfortable enough that I can maybe start the process with ODOT. All these details are being worked out, and, um, ultimately, the IGA will will come back. Uh, but in terms of the permit to work in the right of way, you know, that's going to be a function, you know, hopefully of licensed bonded contractor. And, uh, you know, the county is as the permit holder for ODOT.
Looks like we're getting started.
Great.
Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you for coming.
Nice simple mind drawing to start it all, right?
That's the beginning, there's plenty of room for notes on that, I see.
So Chris, when do we think we might see this, just to as an optimist? I mean, to see it like when I'm driving into town.
December.
December?
December twenty-three, ODOT will have finished their 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 bare naked base, that's the palette on which we have to work with.
Okay.
By that time, we should have had the large items, we can't put the rocks on if they've placed the curbs. So we'll have, it'll be in stages, but I I'm thinking, um, end of January, everything should be in place if everybody's communicating, okay, it's now your turn, now it's your turn, you've got two days to finish this, and I I think it's it's totally doable, I've never done anything like this before, Anne has, the two of us are really generating a lot of positive steam from the neighborhoods, from the businessmen, from the contractors, and now from the county, thank you.
And if you need to make the party bigger, my friends, I think with the cider company, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's the other side is empty, so where heritage was, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Depending on weather, we'll make it big.
Yeah, if you want to make it bigger, I was just thinking, I'm sure I could talk them into it, so we need to add more people from the community.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good community gathering.
I'm sure they'll welcome volunteering, yeah?
Thank you so much.
You will be our guest of honor.
Oh, thank you. No, 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 you guys have done a great job, I really, this is what I love, I have a rock hard at my house, it's from the original ranch. And it is, you know, it's it's really important to keep that heritage going, so thank you for all your vision.
Well, thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And your support, great. Comfortable.
Oh, good, another party.
Item number three, uh, IGA with ODOT for all roads transportation safety intersection upgrades project.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, also a audio video video engineer and
Hey, you did a great job there.
A young man, according to some, so.
Yeah, yeah, young man.
Uh, so, uh, first of three items I have for you this afternoon, uh, is an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT uh, for the All Roads Transportation Safety Intersection Upgrades Project. Uh, so, uh, All Roads Transportation Safety or ARTS Program is a is a federally funded program administered through ARTS. Uh, ODOT has, uh, allocated some of this money for some intersection safety improvements at and around the O'Neill Junction intersection on Highway ninety-seven. Uh, the agreement before you, uh, this afternoon would allow ODOT to enter onto county right of way to begin the necessary fieldwork to start designing this project, as well as, uh, enter onto county right of way to ultimately build the project. Uh, no county funds are are being proposed for this project, uh, the project's still in very preliminary phases, uh, uh, very preliminary phase, but in general, the intent of the project is to eliminate, uh, through or, uh, left turn through movements across Highway ninety-seven at the, uh, uh, North Canal, Highway ninety-seven intersection, as well as the O'Neill Junction, uh, O'Neill Highway, uh, Burchell Way, Highway ninety-seven intersection. Uh, so with that, happy to answer any questions.
Great, sounds like an opportunity for ODOT to come in and, uh, do safety, safety work. Any other questions? Have any questions on this? There in motion.
Um, some of approval of a document number twenty twenty-three dash four one five, an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the road, All Roads Transportation Safety Intersection Upgrades Project.
Second, any other discussion? Seeing that Commissioner there.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang. Yes, and Chair votes, yes, there we go. Next item, for intent to award contract for paving.
Okay, yeah, so a second item I have, uh, this afternoon, uh, so the Road Department prepared bid solicitation documents for the paving of Roslyn Road, US ninety-seven to Drafta Road project. Uh, scope of work for the project includes paving and reconstruction of Roslyn Road, uh, as well as Tracy Road and Wendy Road, uh, right right around the Wikiup Junction area there near the Gordy's Truck Stop in Lapine. Uh, department opened bids for the project on April nineteenth, two bids were received for the project. Uh, before you, this afternoon, as a notice of intent to award contract to Taylor Northwest LLC uh, for a total contract amount of six hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. Uh, as always, uh, uh, approval and publishing of the notice of intent to award letter will begin a one-week protest period. Uh, and after that protest period, if no protests were received, uh, the contract would be awarded administratively. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
So Cody, I noticed it was a bit above the estimate, um, you know, which a lot of our bits lately seem like they've been under our estimates, so this was the first one up, did you expect it to be a touch bar?
Uh, no, we expected it to be about what we had estimated, uh, we, uh, I I guess among, uh, various things we saw in the bid tabulation, the, uh, the paving and asphalt prices, which we had we had estimated to be uh, much higher than what we've seen recently on other projects, uh, just by nature of this being a, uh, uh, fairly small, a relatively small quantity of of asphalt going down, and and also just with it being in the southern part of the county where most of our mixed plants are up, uh, towards the northern part of the county. Uh, we had anticipated the the asphalt prices on this project to be a little higher, but, uh, we were a little surprised they're even higher than what we were anticipating. So anyways, yeah, um, uh, we we were, I guess, uh, uh, also on the topic of surprises, we were we were kind of surprised we only had the two bidders. We were expecting a couple more bidders on this one, but Taylor Northwest is delivering, uh, a, uh, sewer line project for the city of Lapine right now, so they they were kind of uh, in a prime spot to to get this project, so, um, they don't generally participate on more of our traditional paving projects, but here they are.
Thank you for the backup.
How how long of a of a segment of road are we talking about? I mean, you know, in my mind, from from Highway ninety-seven to Rock to, uh, to, you know, to to Drafta, like, it's not that far.
No, it's not, um, a- as far as an exact length, I don't have that off the top of my head here, I'm I'm quickly zooming in on my GIS map here to measure, um, just that particular length of of Roslyn Road. You're talking about, uh, about a thousand feet, um. On top of that, we've got another, uh, approximately six hundred feet of Tracy Road, and about four hundred feet of Wendy Road. Um, but it, uh, the remainder of Roslyn Road is is something we can fairly easily and 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 will be fairly easily, uh, treating with a with a chip seal and and some of the other uh, more routine tools we have in our toolbox, this particular section of road receives, uh, uh, a very significant amount of traffic, in particular, truck traffic, just by nature of it being right there at the truck stop and some of the other services that are right there uh, in that little island there, uh, between Tracy, Wendy, and Roslyn Road, so uh, this thing, yeah, this thing seeing truck traffic, you know, twenty-four hours a day, uh, been been getting beat pretty hard. Uh, last time we did any any sort of real, uh, substantial, uh, maintenance work on this was approximately seven years ago, I believe, and that was just something we did with our own county forces, uh, with cold mix, so it's, this has kind of been a long time coming for this little piece of road, but it's it's not just, uh, I mean, the 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 name of the project is paving, but it's there's a lot more, it's not just our, one of our traditional pavement preservation projects, we're basically, for for most of this, we're we're completely obliterating the entire roadway, digging it out, building a new road base, uh, putting down some new structure below that, and then and then paving over the top of that.
Thanks. So the terminology, Lapine Maintenance Zone, is that it's referring to basically the city of Lapine, correct, and just the way we wrote it up there?
Um, actually, I guess, where are you seeing Lapine Maintenance Zone?
Uh, background and policy implications on the gender request.
I I mean, uh, Lapine Maintenance Zone is is generally everything, uh, basically Sun River South, we've we've got the county divided up into four different maintenance zones. Um, I wasn't aware we had actually identified Lapine Maintenance Zone on anything in here, but I'm still, oh, I see what you're saying.
Well, I just referred in the city of Lapine, so it's our partnership with the young city still, uh, and that, you know, I do see this, uh, it it definitely got, uh, alligator cracked, uh, all through that intersection, there's not much there, and I I drive it pretty regularly once, once in a while, so a good reconstruction project is is needed. So with that, is there a motion?
Um, approval of Chair's signature of document number twenty twenty-three dash zero six five, a notice of intent to award a contract for the paving of Roslyn Road from US ninety-seven to Drafta Road.
Second, any other discussion? Seeing that Commissioner there.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And Chair votes, yes, thank you very much, and then item number five, notice of intent to award contract for Northwest Lower Bridgeway, Forty-third Street.
Okay, uh, so, uh, the the intersection of Northwest Lower Bridgeway and Northwest Forty-third Street is presently a three-leg intersection. Um, this intersection is is a fairly heavily trafficked intersection, it it being kind of the the primary entrance into Crooked River Ranch, so so all traffic that's going from Highway ninety-seven uh, into Crooked River Ranch is going through this intersection. Um, the Road Department, uh, put out a request for proposals for engineering services for, uh, making safety improvements to this intersection, uh, this project's intended to be, uh, the first of of several phases of uh, modernization and safety improvements along, uh, Northwest Lower Bridgeway, uh, project that's identified in the county's current TSP and will be carried forward in the in the in the, uh, currently, uh, draft TSP that that will be, um, uh, with the update that we'll be doing later this year. Um, so Road Department, uh, issued the RFP, uh, the the intent of the initial contract, th- this is intended to be a two-phase project, this intersection project, the first phase of the engineering services is going to be, uh, evaluating different concepts for intersection treatments at this intersection, uh, looking at the crash history at this intersection and the 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 different factors and mechanisms in those crashes, uh, looking at the different costs, the right-of-way impacts. Uh, this this intersection's basically completely surrounded by federal land there with BLM, uh, we also have BPA right-of-way that goes right through there, so in terms of, uh, right-of-way needs, it's going to be, uh, with, uh, a- anything we're doing here is going to be a fairly lengthy uh, process to secure right-of-way, uh, uh, across federal lands. Uh, so that said, uh, the department, uh, received uh, proposals on February third, uh, and scored those proposals using a qualifications-based election process pursuant to state law. Uh, based on this process, Harper Hoff Peterson Regalias Inc. was selected as the top-ranked proposer out of the two proposals that we received. Uh, summary summary of the the proposal scores is included in the agenda packet. Uh, department, uh, conducted negotiations with, uh, HHPR, uh, between March sixth and April twenty-first. Uh, we now are ready to proceed with the award of that contract, so before you this morning, or this afternoon, rather, is a notice of intent to award contract to Harper Hoff Peterson Regalias, and I'm looking now, and I did not include the, uh, contract amount my staff reported is, it is included in the, uh, notice of intent to award letter, but the, uh, contract amount for that Phase One work is one hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
So I see the the, I have three options in the back, so is that part of their application?
Yeah, so so tho- those two sheets there, uh, in the back of the agenda item in the packet are uh, some of the concepts that ADHPR developed and included in their proposal that we received, so uh, in general, the these are kind of the three options we're going to, uh, with with this Phase One contract that we're going to vet more and evaluate. And, uh, uh, at the end of that Phase One contract, the intent is to, uh, through through, um, obviously, looking at the the cost estimate, the the schedule, the, uh, safety criteria, um, also probably through some sort of public involvement process, we'll probably, uh, probably looking at doing some type of online open house for this, uh, in particular, reaching out to the the residents there in Crooked River Ranch. Um, then select the preferred concept, Phase Two would be moving towards actual construction plans for that concept. Uh, and then and obviously, construction of that concept, uh, so so the intent here is is, uh, after some time here, uh, ho- hopefully towards the end of calendar year twenty-four, we'll be coming back to the board with with this is the preferred concept, and now we're ready to uh, engage in in the Phase Two contract for the design work.
So, Cody, I remember talking to Chris about this, something about this road was not as wide as it should be. Is eventually that going to be part of what we're going to be doing in Phase Two?
So so, uh, so when I'm talking Phase Two now, I'm I'm talking, I'm just talking about Phase Two of the design for this intersection, so Phase One's coming up with the preferred concept, Phase Two would actually be design and construction of that intersection. Meanwhile, thi- this intersection is is really the first phase of a multi-phase project we'll be doing on Lower Bridgeway, which, yes, will include, uh, modernization, safety improvements, widening of the road, uh, Lower Bridgeway being part of the state scenic bike way there, among other things, um, so, yeah.
So when is that going to be possibly happening?
Um, we don't have exact timelines laid out on that, this this is this is kind of the first one, because this is going to be the the biggest one, this is the one we're really seeing the 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 potential that there's going to be some right-of-way acquisition, and and because it's going to be through some sort of federal process, we're we're anticipating that to be a fairly lengthy process, so so this is this is kind of first out the door, the intent is is after we get this one, um, you know, more or less in the hopper, then then we'd start looking at how we're going to, uh, keep continuing west with those improvements on Lower Bridgeway.
Thank you.
Cody, how, um, what kind of assumptions about, uh, growth and traffic, uh, increasing? Uh, you know, the, uh, daily trips increasing, are are we using as we design this? I mean, there's still a lot of open, there's there's still a lot of, uh, unbuilt lots in Crooked River Ranch, um, we're certainly seeing a lot of interest in, uh, people doing doing new things out in the Lower Bridge Valley. Um, are we, are we building for the future, or are we, are we thinking about what what we're seeing right now and trying to build for that?
Oh, yeah, building for the future is definitely going to be part of this Phase One, uh, uh, process here, loo- looking at, yeah, looking at full buildout in Crooked River Ranch, looking at, you know, build out for other, you know, potential areas further out Lower Bridgeway that 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 might, you know, at some point, you know, we've we've already got one fairly large area here that's gone through a rezone, although it doesn't necessarily, at least at this time, have direct connectivity to Lower Bridgeway, uh, but, yeah, looking at the other potential development scenarios uh, further west along Lower Bridge, um, and and on, just on top of that, what the what the future, um, regional traffic model's going to look like, and the potential for, you know, any other, um, uh, trip distribution that would occur on Lower Bridgeway over a twenty-year horizon period.
Thanks. So yes, the notice of intent to award contract. So yes, the notice of intent to award contract is your motion?
I'll move approval of chair signature of document number twenty twenty-three dash zero six seven, a notice of intent to award a contract for engineering services for the Northwest Lower Bridge Way slash Northwest Forty-third Street intersection improvement project.
A second?
Any other discussion? Seeing that question, Chang?
Yes.
Can we share it there?
Yep.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much, Cody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, continuation of board discussion of planning commission appointment.
Afternoon commissioners, Peter Getzowski, community development director, just following up on Wednesday's conversation, uh, where, uh, on that day, Kelsey Carson was appointed by the Board of County Commissioners to fill the Tumalo area vacancy. And now staff is looking for direction on how you want to proceed, uh, as it pertains to an at-large position. Uh, as noted on page two of the memorandum, in coordination with legal counsel, there are two options for proceeding. Uh, we had talked about, uh, for, uh, a few meetings about the opportunity to re- reallocate Commissioner Hovecamp's seat, who is current, he's currently fulfilling, uh, a partial term and in, uh, at-large, shifting Nathan Hovecamp to the Bend area, uh, which would, as noted in the memorandum, allow Commissioner Hovecamp to receive a full four-year term. That would then, uh, make available a four-year term for an at-large, uh, opening. Uh, the other option is noted in option two is Commissioner Hovecamp stays in his existing seat, fulfills the term that was vacated by Les Hudson, and we cancel the, uh, at-large recruitment and go forth and immediately recruit for a Bend area position. And just so the commission knows, that would mean for a period of one year, you would have three people living in the Bend area. Two, two at-large and, excuse me, two Bend area and one at-large. So staff is looking for commissioner, uh, direction at this time, tentatively, May, May twelfth, uh, is the date that's been set aside for the three commissioners to interview candidates, uh, who've expressed interest, uh, for the at-large position.
So we have our planning commissioner terms memo here, and we're referring to the Tumalo seat, but really, this was previously an at-large seat.
Correct.
Uh, just the terminology now, we're using different.
Correct.
And it was the sections on the map of our Deschutes County, uh, area map saying, to the best of our ability, selecting somebody from that area. So I'm just, are we going to change the terminology now, I guess? I don't know if that's guys that you would get from us or just?
I don't think that there's a need to change the geographic representation. As noted in the footnote one, the board, you know, is committed to geographic representation to the extent possible for the last twelve to fifteen months. There has been, uh, a a genuine, uh, you know, effort from Tumalo area residents to respectfully have a representative representative, uh, on the planning commission. And so Dale Crawford's term limits, uh, he's term limited effective, uh, June thirtieth. And so that that at-large vacancy was used to allow Kelsey Carson to fill it, but to fall under the Tumalo area, um, designation.
That's referring to the future, so we're still going to call it an at-large seat. Like, two years from now, if we pull out the book and say, okay, here's through the seats appointments, it's going to be called at-large.
Uh,
The terminology is.
Two years from now, uh, or a year from now, um, what we know now, one one year from now, you will have one at-large position to fill and, uh, as well as, um, this, as well as a Bend area position in in, uh, in June, uh, uh, on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So Commissioner Altman's seat would be, she's eligible for a second term to the extent that the board was supportive of that. Um, but with Kelsey Carson's recent recent appointment, you, the board has gone from two at-large planning commissioner positions to one.
And I think what Commissioner Devon was asking is, is how are we going to label that seat that that Kelsey Carson is going to hold?
That's, I would call it a Tumalo area seat.
That's good for four. That's the next time we publish a matrix like this.
Correct, effective, I gave you, I gave you the 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 table as it stands today.
That's, that's.
Yeah, on July first, it would, it would show Kelsey Carson as a Tumalo area, sorry if I was slow to take.
And so what we're trying to determine today is, uh, how we will fill the second vacancy that is that is going to be opening up on the on the planning commission and whether we're going to follow through on that plan to shift, um, Nathan Hovecamp over to a Bend area seat, freeing up an at-large seat.
Correct.
Whether we want to keep him there for this final year and and then, uh, proceed, you know, pull back the at-large solicitation that we did and and move forward with a Bend area solicitation.
That's exactly correct.
My thoughts?
Yeah.
Oh, gee. Um, let's see. I would say leave Commissioner Hovecamp at his at-large and shift to, um, bringing someone from Bend. That's, um, for, it would be a four-year appointment, correct?
That is correct.
For Maggie's seat.
So, uh, switching gears from from where we were previously, what you'd be proposing?
Yes. I mean, he was appointed for that seat for two years. So I remember, um, to quote Peter, he said, that would be uncharacteristic to switching to uh, two years if he went to Bend. So I'm saying, okay, then let's leave him where he is and let's bring another Bend person in. If he was, uh, appointed for at-large, maybe I'm at at-large.
Uh, but we've run, I mean, we've run a solicitation for an at-large seat operating under the assumption that we were going to, uh, make that move. Um, and, you know, a number of, a number of people put in, threw their hat in the ring, uh, for an at-large seat. And I, um, I don't feel very good about, um, essentially cancelling that solicitation right now. And and, um, and then, you know, telling all those people, thanks for spending the time to to to, you know, do your homework and research this and throw your hat in the ring and fill out an application. Um, but, you know, that's on pause now and we're going to go and we're going to look for a a Bend area person.
Well, I said last week, if we move Nathan to the Bend, I didn't want to make it a four-year. I said he was in, he was originally nominated for two years, so, and, um, there was some question about that. So that's why I changed what I was saying last week.
Well, uh, I'm supportive of putting Nathan in that Bend area seat, uh, just like we had proceeded to. Uh, yeah, this is, uh, a point where we're going to get this all stabilized. July first will be, you know, a couple of people in there. And so then the question, uh, if somebody's finishing up a two-year term and then getting appointed to a four-year term, what's it look like four years from now or six years from now? I mean, total of the eight years of, uh, serving.
Great question.
The important thing is we need, uh, we need to have our terms staggered. And so that's why I'm saying, if he moves over, he still should have that staggered term because, um, I believe that's what we're really doing. We only have so many people a year that are replaced.
Yeah, the staggered terms are, to Mr. Harris' point, you're always going to have some overlap. The goal is to try to have a, have a, always have a quorum. Um, to, uh, your point, uh, Mr. Chairman, the way the code reads, you're allowed, you can, you're allowed, uh, you two full, full terms. Um, and and the code speaks to if one has a, I don't have it exactly memorized, but if you inherited a partial term, you're eligible for two full terms. Uh, there's also a provision to the extent that there was a major project that, uh, the planning commission was involved in, and you had commissioners that were about to term out. The board could, at its discretion, allow those commissioners to continue serving until that project went through their purview. But as it pertains to Commissioner Hovecamp, he, as I read the code, he would, I mean, I'm trying to be presumptuous, but he, he would be entitled to a four-year term for the Bend area. And then if the commission so choo- so so chose in twenty twenty-seven, he would be eligible for a second term. But that's, I don't want to get, you know, I'm trying to speak for this board. It is possible and it's happened in the past.
Peter, based on what you just said, uh, theoretically, then we can actually extend either Dale or Maggie, uh, because we're right in the middle of a comp plan, you know, a pretty significant project. I mean, it is.
That that is true. I mean, I, the comp plan update won't, uh, i- i- technically, that's true. Um, the the sensitivity that staff had was more for the build-air inventory. And you'll remember, staff went to the board to get direction on the on the build-air. There was enough time in the spring to ensure that hearings could take place and there'd be ample time for deliberation. I don't, and I, and I do think that the planning, this current planning commission will be able to give a recommendation to the board by the end of June. Uh, the comp plan update, the hearings process won't kick off until late fall, so it's hard for me. The board could certainly rationalize, if you wanted to, to to keep, uh, the two existing commissioners that turned out. But the way I've always conceptualized it, it's it's a project that's in evidentiary hearings, uh, ongoing and they're staring at their term limit that's just a few weeks away or, um, and in that respect, you know, staff could come back to the board and acknowledge, hey, they're they're still in, uh, in hearing mode or they're about to deliberate with the board, consider extending their term to allow deliberations to be fulfilled.
Uh, just for, just for a little.
Just for a narrow margin. But the comp plan update, I don't, again, I don't see us initiating the legislative amendment until, uh, late fall. So it really doesn't apply.
Okay, just to, sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Just to add on, it, the code does specifically say that that lim- it's limited to six months.
Yes, that's a short term. I mean, you know, one, one additional thought that came to mind was, you know, if that was, if I, if that gave us a year, then we could, um, we might be able to figure out something with the, the Bend area seat and and, uh, this at-large seat for a year from now. Six months is six months.
Well, as I've said in the past, I mean, I want to have diverse opinions at the table there, uh, and I do support and I had selected Nathan, uh, for the planning commission. So I'm comfortable in putting him in that Bend seat, uh, for a four-year term. Uh, you know, we'll see what happens after four years from now. That's the future, uh, which gets us on our path that we intend to work through.
Certainly.
And I, um, that really bothers me. He, um, definitely, he's, um, was a member of Central Oregon Land Watch. And, um, I just feel like if you want a diverse group of people, I would prefer, um, having him on for another year and then going with someone else. So, anyway.
Uh, I think it's really important to look at the way that, uh, planning commissioners have acted um, since they were appointed. Um, and Nathan Hovecamp has given me no concerns about, uh, the way he's implementing, you know, the duties of a planning commissioner. In my mind, the planning commissioner is there to, um, to help the county engage with the public, do a lot of listening, um, to learn, to learn code, to learn the law and to provide us with the the most balanced, reasonable recommendations that they can. And, um, as far as I can tell, that is exactly what Nathan Hovecamp has been doing, regardless of whether he has, uh, an affiliation with Land Watch or not, which, which he has, uh, um, ended and notified us that he has ended. I, I would support the proposal.
But I was given the impression he'd already ended that relationship when he first ran. And apparently he hadn't at that time, so I, you know, I have a different opinion.
So let's, should we put this on the minutes now or the vote? I mean, I just.
I would.
To see, we're trying, we're going to do what we were going to do, now we're going to.
I would recommend a motion at the vote.
Uh, I, so, I, I move appointment of Nathan Hovecamp to, uh, a Bend area planning commissioner seat, uh, four-year term. And I'll second it. Uh, so any other discussion?
See, now, Commissioner Chang? Yes, Commissioner Jared?
No.
And Chair votes yes. Say, uh, this is the world we live in, and I want to see these, uh, discussions at the planning commission, too. Different opinions are okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll, we'll proceed now with, uh, the at-large interviews as well.
Right, good. Uh, I did see your email. We'll, uh, we'll all, all work with, I'll work with Brenda, uh, uh, calendar holds and all of that. But, uh, in terms of the candidates that are interviewed from two to five on the, on May twelfth, so more to come. Uh, and, uh, both the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission are planning on participating, so we don't have a public meeting. So thank you for this direction and I'll get that set up, I don't know if we can get it later finalized in terms of logistics.
Great, thank you, thank you. Next item, a follow-up for video lottery fund allocation. Your best. Greg, Greg? Your best.
Oh.
Bring time. Yeah, you might not need it.
I got one, I got outside.
Yep. Choose what's covered. Oh, great, nice, big format. Can we pull up that same spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Good, we'll get it.
I think it kicked me out when I came at.
You ever work with our, uh, video lottery allocation spreadsheet for annual review? There it is.
Okay, perfect. All right, for the record, Stephanie Robinson, Administrative Services. I'm here again this afternoon to review anticipated revenue from the county's portion of video lottery proceeds and continued development of the expenditure plan for FY twenty-four. I was planning to just start working in the spreadsheet, but first wanted to ask if the board had any questions or follow-up items from last week.
Okay, so, meeting we had today, did you say that we can do the campaign feasibility, can that all be moved off of this statement, right?
Give the board support step, decision.
Right, there's actually that campground fund, eight hundred thousand balance, so we could take that, um, hundred thousand. We actually paid for it in twenty-three, can we reimburse that and move it over?
Yeah, plan.
Yeah.
If the board is supportive to allocate fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four charges to the fund.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea. My.
Uh, I would support that. It's a, it's a parks program development fund. Um, and, uh, this campground feasibility study can help us, uh, essentially create the anchor piece, uh, for two or more parks, uh, in the county. And, um, I, I think it's a very appropriate. two or more parks, uh, in the county, and, um, I I think it's a very appropriate place to draw uh, the funds for for the feasibility study.
Do you have a little bit more introduction on that fund itself? You know, how does it get funded? How how much money's been going into it in the last few years?
I don't have that at my fingertips. Um, I can speak generally, but I think it'd be best to follow up with you with a little bit more detail on actuals that have come into the fund over the years.
Oh, yeah, so I guess I add to that just a follow-up from this discussion.
Okay. I definitely, but it's Fund 130, which is park acquisition and development, and it's, you may know, you don't.
I'll go grab a budget.
Okay.
I just, I know about this fund from when I was at the Park District in LePine before the pine was the city, and I asked for money out of this fund, and I think we've got couple tens of thousands of dollars, you know, maybe forty thousand or sixty thousand dollars out of it from from the county, from this fund of the county when I was on the Park District Board for, uh, park improvements in in the unincorporated community of LePine back in the day, so, as I say, I just happened to process this on fifteen or seventeen years ago.
So I don't know if anybody checked the minutes or not, but the sister chamber, I I thought we'd approved that fifty thousand, we just weren't gonna give them to them last year. Did we check those minutes?
Uh, so getting back to that one, so you're, yeah, going up and down the spreadsheet here, but I I support that allocation. Uh, are you supportive of that? You know, different topic than sisters.
I I we're gonna, are we gonna come back to the parks, or we're just, we're just?
Uh, yeah, so we're gonna get up the.
Well, I see.
Forge and the.
Well, she's, yeah, she's mentioned that, so now she's a little bit in mind.
I mean, going up, going back to that that whole bracket, um, I I believe that 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 package of three atco, uh, the Sun River Chamber and the Sisters Chamber that we, um,
Yeah, somebody open that door. It's locked on the outside, so I'll just unlock it. This is our public meeting, if you want to do it. There we go.
I was gonna say, I good, excellent timing, John. I was gonna say, on on all three of these.
You weren't gonna cut anything from your.
On all, all three of the, well, I I I was gonna, I was gonna say that I I support a an increased spread and co, but I maybe not that this big of an increase, um, and I think we need to, we need to, um, tighten our belts on those two chamber, those three chamber requests, essentially, um. These, we have a lot of demands for these lottery funds. There are, um, there are a lot of ways to support economic development. One of my goals is for us to to reach a place where we could actually use some of these lottery dollars uh, to support workforce, workforce housing initiatives, um, and I don't see how we do that without just being very, um, very frugal across the board with all of our existing categories, uh, and and making it a priority.
Uh, so, specific line items then, uh, we're, it was mentioned Sisters Chamber General Operations. Is that a yes or no, or for the numbers? I'm supportive of.
Support smaller amounts.
I thought we'd already approved it. Does anybody have access to those minutes?
Well, we could just do it.
We said we'd give seventy-five then, and then we said, I mean, if we already said we would do it, I don't want to renege on something we've already agreed to.
So I'm pretty sure we didn't make a multi-year agreement.
So, I mean, now is the decision.
Oh.
Commissioner there, support that fifty thousand.
Right, I just supported. But I thought we already had, so.
Yeah, so.
So if there's two, if there's two votes, then.
It's the same, let's, yeah, let's work out with you this, and hopefully see the balance, because that's it. This is our board of commissioners allocation, and if we start going, we owe, we can.
So we could add the fifty-eight that we funded that we're gonna transfer around to, so then we really have a hundred eighty thousand, if you wanted to.
That's true, yeah.
Okay, well, so.
We're gonna now put that back in. So the beginning network.
Yeah, let's work, just work simply down the spreadsheet and then get to the numbers, just so we're clear here, so it was general two to one support for Sisters Chamber General Operations, five zero zero zero, yeah? Uh, for Sun River, I've always been supportive, um, I'm hesitant to support support this shop Sun River campaign, uh, and Christine Thomas said that these are the great dollars I get to go promote things with. Uh, but, yeah, this is where I would, I would tighten the belt a little bit, as in, you know, support the general operations, but not the next project dollars.
Well, we need those businesses, and as Jim Vista said, if we don't support them, they're not going to have the businesses in the community, and to repeat, Sun River is providing um, seventy-three percent of our room tax revenue per year this year today. So I would, I would do ten thousand and hope she can, you know, do something with that amount of money.
Do you support anything?
I would support five to ten thousand.
As I say, I'm comfortable not supporting it, uh, so we're going three different ways on this one.
So we have two, five, well, we have ten, ten and five.
So between, between ten and zero, there's five, I I guess I would pitch five.
There we go.
So I'm pitching ten, so do they get seventy-five hundred?
No, you 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 pitched ten, you pitched zero, I pitched five, so I'm trying to split the difference.
So five thousand?
That has support.
Better than nothing.
Let's segue the board's process of what we have all along parks, and if you'd like.
Yeah, so we can follow up. Okay, so now we're gonna go back to our funds, yeah, it's Fund 130, it's
the funds can only be used for county designated parks or future park planning. The revenue comes from, uh, primarily from the RV park proportionate funds from the state, and we've been budgeting about three hundred thousand dollars in revenue each year, and then majority of it is transferred to the RV park, about a hundred ninety thousand, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars each year that's been going to the RV park, and that's why there's a balance, because we've been getting about three hundred thousand in, about one ninety going out. The other fund that sounds similar to it is the park development deeds.
That's what I was referring to, so it wasn't.
Yeah, that's, it blew up donating land for park development at the time of subdivisions to uh, developers contribute to that.
So then that, yeah, so it was a different fund than this 130 that I was involved in seventeen years ago or so, before there was the city of LePine, because there was those development plays, and there was, uh, in lieu of parks, so that's exactly what I was.
The other, the other one is basically a S SDC via.
Yes. Okay, so now we know more about that, and, uh, uh, so the line item for this one, if we go back to the bottom again, so the the Northwest Contract Mount. So, um, camping feasibility study, the balance, uh, so the proposal is, yeah, to fund a hundred thousand for that to offset most of those matters.
Correct, so Commissioner Adair had identified that it'll increase the beginning network capital, which I'd expect may already adjusted.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, I would also put a little of that. Okay, now, let's start off where, yeah, where we need to go from top to bottom. Or what is, do we have any?
I guess the the only other thing I'd say about that is that that leaves us a healthy amount, if the feasibility study looks really good, and we want to use some of those dollars for the actual capital, capital construction costs, one of these park concepts.
So a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so I see Christine just came in, so forty-five thousand dollars base support and, uh, negotiated five thousand instead of twenty thousand, and we'll be just, to discuss what we had just before we walked in the door, so just letting you know. Any other kind of blank slots?
Fuel reduction and the United Way.
It's a fuel reduction program.
I guess I got a little bit more information about the Oregon State Fire Marshal, um, funding that, um, may come our way through the grant running efforts of Oregon Living with Fire, and there, it it does sound like some of those dollars could be available to fulfill a similar function to these fuel reduction grant, uh, these fuel reduction grants, um, doesn't sound like it could replace a hundred thousand dollars, um, but it could replace some, um, I will go back to, to, uh, proposing again fifty thousand dollars in this category.
And my conclusion is, I'd like to put something in there, because any of these little dollars can really trigger somebody, you know, because they're pretty flexible dollars also, so fifty thousand is gonna propose in the future.
Um, what to do when we put eighty thousand again in United Way? What does it look to with the balance in Stephanie, just?
First two steps ahead of the numbers.
Well, I just want to know, I'm backing in, I said twenty, and I don't want to go above it, if if that really doesn't, so where are we at at the bottom?
Oh, for the balance, I have it up here, so it's easy to see.
Forty-five thousand, oh, so we get to forty-five thousand, is that everything then? Two sixty-four?
Um, so I put in the eighty here.
Right.
Fuel's reduction is still open. This includes adding back in the fifty-eight, um, for campaign.
Okay, so we still, we could put in the forty-five thousand there instead of fifty thousand for the grants.
There you go, I, yeah, I support that, so now we'll get the spreadsheet finalized.
If we leave the eighty in United Way, and I think, I think we're, I don't think anything else, we want to go back, I really don't want to change the ECO numbers. Um, I want John's people to be able to afford to live here and work here and what they do, I think that's important, so. I don't know, unless you want to change the ECO, reduce their funding.
Well, let's talk about, so the affordable housing trust fund, uh, it's, you know, a million dollar ask, uh, I
Three million dollar ask.
Big money ask, uh, three hundred thousand was the number that we were just kind of pointing around with, where it could be the scope of a good starting point, and I, I I think that's a good number, as in, that gives enough, uh, you know, runway to go do something for, you know, maybe ten, ten development opportunities, this is my thought process, so do you like that scale or scope of the starting point?
I I think, I I'd like to see a bigger scale, I think, um, there's gonna be a huge amount of setup, um, in to do that program, and to do that for just three hundred thousand dollars, ten, ten units is, is a whole lot of work, uh, you know, creating a program with not a whole lot of funding to to deploy. So I I'd like to see us get to something more like a five hundred thousand dollar level.
I think Nick was talking today about, uh, the housing trust fund that we had an access to. I don't know if you've had that meeting with him or not, but he was saying that there's an economic loan fund at six hundred thousand, and maybe we could take half of that, is that, is that different funding?
Actually, you're you're exactly right, but I was wrong, that it's not six hundred, the balance of that fund is just three hundred twenty-four thousand, so.
Okay.
And I have not had this this conversation with, uh, ECO, when I, uh, asked Robert, our CFO, and just to identify if the board is interested in funding uh, the Housing Trust Fund, which is intended for workforce housing, are there any other options for the board to consider, and that those two options, one would be on the discretionary interest that we have in our ARPA fund account, um, which is ballpark three hundred thousand dollars, or if the board, and again, we haven't discussed this with ECO to understand the impacts to them, but uh, there is three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in, uh, Fund O5O, which we've used for the economic development mode uh, program in the past, so another option for the board would be to utilize the three hundred thousand dollars, um, one time, or whatever the board chooses this year for workforce housing, I'm just gonna say, and we hear that number one issue for employers is housing, and so that, I think the board should make a choice either today or in the future, you don't have to decide that.
And there's actually a balance carried forward of ARPA funding that has not been allocated of four hundred and twelve thousand.
Yeah.
They interest.
It is.
No, no, it is.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right.
The balance.
Yeah, yeah, but we can't use that for workforce housing initiatives, because, uh, ARPA is only eligible for, um, eighty percent AMI lower.
So, uh, and I'm not opposed to, uh, taking taking our beginning fund balance next year down for this purpose also.
Then create interest.
Interest.
The the beginning fund balance that we're talking about, uh, one point, you know, you know, a million dollars or whatever the number's gonna be, one point something million. I don't mind, you know, talking about starting with some of these dollars also. Uh, we're, we dialed that in pretty well with our, uh, current allocations. Uh, we could dial it even back more, but I don't know if we need to, uh, but, yeah, I'm just saying, we
I'm I'm pretty, I'm okay with these allocations. I would say, I guess my proposal would be to take to go into the being working capital, um, here, um, but for the lottery funds, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, and then take two hundred thousand dollars of those American Rescue Plan interest dollars that we have to get to five hundred thousand.
I think, uh, and you may already have this information, Commissioner Chang, just so the full board has it, um, the ARPA interest could be is to buy down debt for the courthouse, whereas something like the O5O balance, technically, I guess you could use either option, but the courthouse, the ARPA interest could be more easily applied to buying down that courthouse debt. Correct. The, um, O5O has primarily been funded through transfers from Fund 165 Video Lottery, so it's more closely tied to this type of an allocation in terms of where the dollars originated from.
Well, maybe I would revise that then. Yeah, I I went back and I looked pretty carefully at, uh, at the numbers and the 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 graphs in the presentation that Stephanie provided for us, thank you, um, last time, and as far as I can tell, the beginning networking capital, the reserves for lottery dollars, it it hasn't been near a million dollars, um, but for like the last couple of years, because of the, um, uh, you know, the the, you know, appropriate thank you fiscal discipline of of board commissioners in fiscal year twenty and twenty-one, um, you know, if I if I read correctly, in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the the reserve amount was only six hundred thousand dollars at that point, um, so to go back down kind of into that, into that neighborhood at this point, it you know, it's not, um, it's not like we're we're burning down the reserve that has been a million dollars for many years, we're basically just reverting back to reserve levels from just a couple of years ago.
Commissioner, so so what's your thought, taking much out of here now, or?
I, my original proposal was three hundred thousand per year and two hundred thousand of those ARPA, um, ARPA, you know, ARPA dollar interest earnings, but, um, if those are much more flexible than these dollars, then maybe we'd want to save some of those, and and, um, I would suggest a larger, a larger amount from from video lottery, being working capital.
There.
You mean, taking the balance lower is what you're saying you want to do?
Yes.
Beginning network capital next year, this video lottery.
I think we need to keep the learnings. I think, but I was.
Yes, as recently as fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the reserve was only six hundred thousand dollars, so you know, I'm just suggesting.
I know, we haven't had an interest rate, um, let's see, what are we getting at the end of this week, so, um, I don't know, I would just like to be conservative for a while longer.
So what about, do you support coming up with some, uh, dollars for affordable housing trust fund?
Right, yeah.
Like the amount of three hundred or five hundred, the numbers that we've been talking about?
Three hundred thousand. Um, yes, we can find three hundred thousand somewhere. You're saying there is three hundred twenty-four thousand, is there probably a vision all of that one?
Essentially, if you were to move, allocate three hundred thousand dollars out of Fund O5O, there'd be a smaller amount remaining for potential future economic development loan applications through ECO, and I think that would be a discussion for the board
Right.
at that time about if you, what you thought the, um, the next steps would be related to that fund that's been announced.
That's pretty low, yeah.
Well, uh, so for clarity, I mean, I support, as I say, I got three hundred thousand, that was just a starting number, could be different, but, uh, I don't, I maybe we just need to bring this as an agenda item to get an update from the person, you know, the group that's advocating for this, what's the maturity of it? What's the overhead of getting this started, uh, you know, if it's a three hundred thousand dollars, you get GDP, it's the first hundred and fifty to set up the program, or I don't know about, so maybe we should just, uh, you know, not make a choice today, but as I say, I'm supportive of some number here, uh, and then just bring it back to the near future. This fund is available for these one-time discussions, uh, especially, you know, the state legislature. If we get some capital dollars for our project, the world's gonna look different, and that's, you know, number six weeks away or seven weeks. project, the world's gonna look different, and that's, you know, number six weeks away or seven weeks.
Six.
And I can schedule that for the board, Sherry Halt, who's been, really the champion for this, has had some unexpected issues come up where she hasn't been able, she's been, has been intending to provide more information, but, uh, just hasn't been able to do so at this time, so that sets us up nicely for a discussion here in the weeks ahead.
Yeah, maybe in the next two weeks or something.
Yeah, I'll put it. Good, so then we can be, yeah, done with our allocations, knowing that, uh, yeah, that, that's our snapshot for now, and, uh, you know, all that everybody named in here knows what's coming, uh, and show support for the Affordable Housing Trust in some form in the scale we've discussed.
Okay. This is, this is still gonna be the most likely place that I would look for three, four, five hundred thousand dollars um, when, when we talk about where we're gonna get funding for that workforce housing.
That's fine. Okay, so there's our spreadsheet for the year. And.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. That's it, our published agenda, uh, to go to other items, we have a few things, and then there's an executive session also. So, go ahead with the, great, yeah, the two items coming up, yep, okay, um, we can start with you, go ahead. This is the, uh, FEMA's Analytics and Management, yes, Agency of the Biological Opinion requesting up the Tullamook County so I, I did provide this information to Chris this morning, but none of us had, I haven't had a time to look at it in detail, I'm not sure if Chris has had, so if you can provide a bit of a snapshot of what the request is to refresh.
Sure, uh, thank you, Commissioners, you're the task, you're the Development Director, and ideally Will Gross would be your planning manager, who's also the floodplain coordinator, so what we, what the board has received are a respectful template letter that was prepared by Tullamook County, and they've also have a, a law firm that they're working with, there's a PowerPoint presentation that was included, and this is involving, uh, the Federal Emergency Management, uh, Agency is currently doing an environmental review through the National Environmental Policy Act pertaining to the National Flood Insurance Program, uh, tying to a biological opinion that stemmed from a lawsuit that originally occurred in the state of Washington and the state of Oregon that, uh, stemmed from floodplain regulations not complying with, uh, Section Seven Consultation in the Endangered Species Act, and they, the, the biological opinion has found that floodplain regulations have been inappropriately administered that pose what's called jeopardy to anadimous fish as well as, uh, orcas that are in the Pacific Northwest, and what it has done for several counties on the Oregon coast and then the Willamette Valley and along the Columbia, not for Deschutes County because of big falls, which precludes naturally anadimous fish from upward migration and into the upper Deschutes. Um, and then Whitechis Creek has, just to finish this off, Whitechis Creek currently has a ten J designation for reintroduced steelhead, which are not, not subject to federal protection. What does this all mean? A lot of, uh, Oregon counties that are affected by the biological opinion are really concerned about regulations that would be imposed from the federal government, these banned, it's these mitigation requirements that can impact the way floodplain development occurs, uh, more stringent, uh, development standards that would be applied, mitigation measures, and this template letter, which could be slightly revised to the extent that the board was supportive of introducing it during a public comment period that closes on May fifth, it would be done in an effort to support your, uh, your colleagues at the, at the county level that are on the front lines of, of, of the, of this circumstance stemming from the biological opinion. So the letter, which has been drafted, again, speaks to socioeconomic impacts, the challenges of administering uh, these more stringent floodplain regulations in alignment with Oregon land use system, uh, Measure Forty-Nine is referenced, you have potential concerns for taking legislation, and counties are really asking for, uh, have, are, are asking questions that are essentially asking the Federal Emergency Management Agency to slow down, to think about the types of, uh, programmatic elements that could be imposed at the local level, it's a big deal, and you may recall it at AOC, um, last fall, I think there was a conversation about it, there certainly, one of your cohorts, uh, County Commissioner from Tullamook County, uh, was, was making the rounds and spoke to the County Planning Directors.
I'm sure you're about that.
Yes, thank you, so that's, that's the, the background, the public comment period now as it pertains to uh, this environmental review, again, it closes on Friday, and so uh, that's why I kind of rushed within coordination with, with Nick to see if this is something that he wanted to support in terms of a letter that, uh, reflects, you know, uh, perspectives from Deschutes County, but certainly more supportive to those counties that are currently directly affected.
So I think we had supported this two to one in the past, is that correct?
Yes, yes, yeah, and, and since that time, I believe the only, uh, feedback or input we've gotten from Deschutes County constituents about this issue has been opposed. Has, has the, the, the local trout unlimited shacker, which represents hundreds, several hundred Deschutes County residents brought us and said that they, uh, did not think that we should be uh, involved in this issue because it doesn't, A, it doesn't affect Deschutes County, B, I mean, you know, I'll be, but you know, we wanna get, get way, way, way into, into water, you know, water, water resource management, watershed and flooding issues. Um, like, I'll provide the perspective that, um, what, what, uh, what Noah Fisheries' action essentially does is it expands the area that is considered floodplain. Um, and that aligns pretty well, actually, you know, like, Noah Fisheries is doing it for fisheries reasons, but it actually aligns pretty well with the, the climatic realities, um, that we're facing, um, hundred-year floodplains were, were originally dry with a very limited amount of, of, um, um, weather, you know, precipitation and flood information. Um, and we've since learned that hundred-year floodplain, the hundred-year floodplains that we drew a long time ago uh, were really more like maybe thirty-year floodplains, or that's fifty-year floodplains, you know, like, in some cases we've seen, you know, in, in, you know, many, well, western Oregon communities, they've seen, you know, three hundred-year floods in ten years, for example, which is not supposed to happen, it's supposed to be every hundred years, um, so uh, fighting against, uh, fighting against an expanded understanding of where floodplains are is fighting against the, the, the physical climatic realities and precipitation realities that Western Oregon faces. I think that they instead should be kind of recognizing that flooding is, is only gonna get worse and that they've underestimated where, uh, you know, where floodplains are in the past, and that they should then turn around and be asking the state to help them um, move businesses and residences and, you know, incorporated areas and other things out of floodplains and asking the state for flexibility to put that stuff somewhere else where it's safer. That would be a much more proactive, uh, thing to do, rather than burying your head in the sand and pretending that flooding doesn't exist. But I will say, I will just circle back again, and say, I will just circle back again and say that the only Deschutes County constituents I am aware of that we've heard from about this have, have urged us not to, uh, get involved.
So we've got, uh, big flooding issues coming because of climate change, and, and there's advocacy for not developing because of lack of water?
Well, there's climate change, but also the hundred-year floodplains that we drew were drawn on a tiny amount of climatic and precipitation data. And now that we actually have twenty, thirty, forty more years of real data, they're saying like, oh, the hundred-year floodplain is actually much bigger than, than it was, than we thought it was.
Because we get big weather events more often sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, again, like I said, there's, there's places in, there's places in western Oregon that have had three hundred-year floods in a ten-year period.
Well, I'm from Hevner, and we had the flood in nineteen oh three, and it took the government a hundred years plus to put in the Walla Creek Dam, so, anyway, that was my family's personal reflection of a, of a major flood, a hundred and fifty-one people died.
Well. So the back of this, uh, talks about.
Yeah, so not letting people put themselves in harm's way is actually a really good idea in the first place.
Well, it took the government over a hundred years to build something, so I was, I was, I was pretty fast.
And if you know where, if you know where people are going to be in harm's way, then asking them to, uh, or helping them build their home, their business, whatever, somewhere else is actually a really smart thing to do, which will save you money a lot of.
So in the back page of this presentation, we're provided talks about Oregon NFIP buyout action area, and it does show eastern side of Deschutes County and all three counties. Uh, so I don't have a feel for what this, what this is relative to the implementation, but we just happen to be in a footprint of a action area, there's no strings in, in that, in that side of.
Right, yeah, that, as mentioned, that because of big falls, um, which is right at our county border, it, it, it's a natural barrier that precludes upward migration, but you're not wrong that Crooked, that Cook County is affected because of Ocho Co, uh.
When the private reservoir is like eighty percent filled all of a sudden, I mean, it was like thirty percent a seven and a half ago, and it's must be filling up real fast right now.
Good, good, I think if you were gonna boil it down to the essence, there's a concerns by your, your fellow county commissioners that, that, um, are in affected counties that there's gonna be a top-down approach from the federal government on, on, on floodplain regulations, mitigation measures, and local governments need to be participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, and so I mean, they can choose to opt out of the NFIP, but in doing so, if there's a flood, they, 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 their, their constituents are not protected with you know, federal insurance, and so, um, it's it, it's just, I, I know at AOC and all three Commissioners expansive, that there's, there's just a, a real anxiety from those counties um, that have anadimous fish, uh, and, and, and the worry that this program, what this program could, could do in especially cities, um, where most of the fertile ground during the settlement patterns were built in the floodplain, there's a lot of rural communities that are in the floodplain, um, and, and so that's what's up for you, it's just whether or not in a supporting role you wanna articulate, uh, you know, this, this, this support as noted in the, in the draft letter, I, 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 to the extent that there is support, I would, I would recommend removing the first bullet point because Deschutes County isn't affected by it, but it could be written in the ways, it, it is kind of supporting the, you know, those counties that are, that are, that are really impacted by, by this biological opinion, this currently this environmental review.
So is, uh, you said Oregon and Washington, is that kind of the only footprint I can give?
That's my, I don't think it's, I think California may have been subject to a different lawsuit, but it started in Washington County by a environmental organization that prevailed in court by showing that the Federal Emergency Management, uh, Agency was when, as it pertained to administering the floodplain program, was not undertaking Section Seven consultation with, with floodplain permits and whatnot, as it pertains, when you're, when you're doing Section Seven consultation, you're looking at threatened or endangered species. They prevailed in, in Washington, and it didn't take too long for an Oregon conservation organization to raise the same concerns in Oregon, and I, I think that's noted earlier in the PowerPoint.
Can you comment on how far this program has progressed with implementation in Washington State?
I, I'm not, I'm not.
I am under the impression that, I am under the impression that they are five years into this already, and, um, if, if people in Oregon think that uh, the federal government is gonna do something in Washington State, and then when confronted with um, resistance to doing the exact same thing in Oregon, that we're gonna, we're special and we're gonna, they're gonna get, they're gonna do something different for us there. In my opinion, being very nice.
So I, I go back to kind of just our statewide land use system, and I think we're already acknowledging, you know, floodplain, and we've got, uh, maps that we publish here at Deschutes County, and, you know, people delineate those more as development is proposed, um, you know, the statewide land use system, I think, would be the I was gonna try to say belt suspenders, but it would be at least the belt holding it all up, so now the Fed's gonna come in with another support and say, okay, we're gonna study it more, so I mean, philosophically, I
The one that, they're not, they're not gonna study it where they're gonna pull, they're gonna pull in, uh, they're gonna pull flood coverage uh, in communities that aren't essentially being mindful of, of where floodplains are.
Yeah, here's the potential to lead to additional regulations, mitigation measures that this, that the federal government finds are suitable to address the floodplain function, and if local governments resist, they, then the federal government will say, well, you're no longer eligible for the National Flood Insurance Program, and that's where
Yeah, I would be, to do that.
That's when, you know, they, they, local governments feel like they're, 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 they're held hostage.
So how about, uh, I, you know, we've taken, two of us have taken a position of showing support, but this is a little too technical for me, I don't know that I'm supportive of trying to write a letter, because I don't know the content that I would be able to defend. It's, and it just frankly irrelevant, Deschutes County, so, any thoughts, Commissioner?
But it's relevant to our state, and if you're saying it could be relevant to Cook County. Um, maybe I'll talk to some Cook County experts and see what they say, what, what's, what's their position.
So, yeah, I mean, if, if you wanna take it a little farther, as I say, I've already shown support and camaraderie for the state,
Worried are they about it? Right.
Uh, but I would need some content, I don't, you know, I, I'm not, you know, bringing up, what statements would be in a letter, I don't know.
And just again, to remind the board that there's this, uh, scoping comment letters are due May fifth, so, which is a Friday.
Which is Friday.
Yeah, so, I think to the extent, I don't know how, how you navigate that.
No action too.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
You can write individual letters if you want.
Thank you very much. It's not right, I mean, Chris is considering the individual.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's what.
Yeah, this is, this is, yeah, so that's a good discussion. Okay, another, yeah, then, then next item, the Association of Oregon Counties, uh, annual dues, um, we have, uh, I think about sixty-nine thousand dollars. I didn't find the exact balance, but.
Sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I wrote the memo.
Perfect.
And I didn't know that last year they were, uh, they were asked to cut it back by, um, you know, President Murdoch, and they, he did, they did cut back the budget last, a year ago, a hundred and fifty thousand, and they did the same thing again this year, so. They are trying to, and then we actually, among the membership committee, and they're reaching out to, um, businesses in the community and actually getting underwriting funding from them on a more significant nature than they've ever got before, so they're hoping that next year's bills were, will be maybe the last.
So this is Association of Oregon Counties, uh, available to all counties, uh, this is our legislative lobbying efforts, uh, position of local government, the counties, uh, very supportive of making member again, so, uh, it's really hard watching, uh, you know, the annual dues go up, and there's serious scrutiny internal to the organization about what are we trying to do and where are we gonna go with this, so, uh, as I say, the, the calculated bill is that sixty-nine thousand dollar number, uh, and this, so it's a, it'll be a minutes motion to pay this bill since it's the kind of lobbying membership contract. Any thoughts?
And the good news is Gina actually. And the good news is Gina actually has been appointed to a national committee over behavioral health, you know, that's her area of expertise. So she is going to DC this week to work on that, which is outstanding, her expertise. So I know paying the annual invoice from AOC of sixty-nine thousand quarter, nineteen dollars and nineteen cents also.
Okay, there we go. Any other discussions, uh, seeing that Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chen, yes, with your votes, yes.
Christine, really might be helpful, is it helpful to the board that we bring less invoice to you under other items each year? Was that, is that something?
Sure.
Well, I mean, yeah, I think definitely, the number every year is, you know, it's been changing. Yeah, we need to acknowledge.
If I'm tracking correctly, you know, they're, they're making a significant jump this year, but then, um. Should stabilize, I mean, they're not gonna have to make a jump this big each year. Um, you know, according to their long-term financial projections, so um, we're just getting to a point where they have a sustainable organization. And if it's not changing a huge amount between this year and next year, I don't, I, I don't know if we have to see it in.
Oh, I want to see.
It's, yeah, we should see, and we should know that we're paying our bills timely. It's rather embarrassing that we go to the meeting and we're on the blacklist. They could, we could be right up there at the top.
Well, you see what happened, they emailed it to Commissioner Adair as the chair, but I'm the chair, so it got lost.
Um.
It's all good.
I think they should be focusing uh intensive attention on counties that don't participate in AOC.
Oh, yeah, we're there every month, yep, somebody's in the room.
So.
Yeah, I hadn't even heard about this, really, I hadn't, I think I did see, you know, originally. All good, okay, uh, any other items?
Um, speaking of AOC, I just wanted to let my fellow commissioners know that. Um, I will not be in person at either the May or the June legislative, AOC legislative. And will be in the May meeting virtually. Um, but in June, I will be gone, I would be out of the office that, that entire week. I'll be on, I'll be out of the office on Friday, then you have the Friday before on the ninth. And I'll be out of the office on, on, I guess that'll be the twelfth. So if someone else is interested in, in uh representing Deschutes County on, on June twelfth, then. I assume that that's the way it works, we can designate someone else from the county.
Can we?
Or is that like the legislative?
Right, the legislative, do we have an alternate?
I'm not sure, I mean, it's, it's ours.
Do we have a voting alternate? That's what we need to find out right now.
I mean, it's, it's our counties.
I know.
This could be the end, end of the session, I don't know if there's gonna be.
Well, I mean, you know, who knows, but like.
Yeah, it could be the most exciting moment.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't tend to track the, the money stuff very closely, but um, that's when a lot of real exciting stuff is gonna be happening. In terms of, in terms of money.
Oh, that's.
But then again, we, we don't necessarily need to be. Uh, if that's a lot of individual lobbying on our part uh with legislators, so that's not necessarily something we're doing with AOC either.
Yeah, so I, and I don't know what the process is for altering on that. I've, you know, I'm attending some committee meetings, and I've been in the room for the legislative meetings, but I haven't felt the need. No, it's just, it is what it is at that point.
Yeah, I, I'll, I, I will be at the May meeting, I just won't, you won't see me in the room, so uh, it doesn't mean I'm not there.
Well, I already committed, I believed, going to dinner on the fifteenth in Salem with the county college group for the membership committee. So I don't know if you want to go on the twelfth or not in person. Which should have.
I probably. Won't. Getting ready for a family wedding.
Well, that's right, you're getting a wedding, so maybe I could go to Salem and stay there that week, right? Well, brother.
And if we didn't have anyone there, it does, it's not a tragedy.
Oh, and uh, we'll see, okay.
Okay, so.
It'll be at the end of the session.
Okay, so June twelfth, all right.
So another note, I was able to attend the Chamber Annual Bankrupt at La Pine and Chamber Commerce Annual Bankrupt this last Saturday. It was exciting, so the Gil Martinez Award is the Community Service Award. And it was given to Boden Forrest, who was the football and baseball coach out of La Pine, and he had gone to school there originally. His dad was the coach when he was in school, he came back and became the coach. He really shepherded a whole cohort of kids when his, so the kids that were his, his kids age. In fact, my son was one of them, I think between their ages. Um, but yeah, just celebrated, you know, a fifteen-year run of, of being above the schools, sports and everything, so it was really exciting. A kind of special moment. Then they didn't have enough people to, to man some of the gaming tables, because there was a company that brought in like jack. So I ended up being a celebrity roulette table, something, or whatever you call it. Man, I was over my head. I don't think I gave away too many chairs though. So that was that.
Oh, I did, I had the privilege of meeting the interim director of Oregon Health Authority at my uh Elgak meeting on Friday morning. It was wonderful, he was there, a couple of other people that should have been there were on Zoom, and they all said they should have been in person, or all things should be in person. I'm thinking like, well, you're the people that are in this room, but um, it was great. Um, some really good things pointed out, and he's very well aware of Dear Ridge, the possibilities there. And um, you know, the help we need, so it was a good meeting.
I guess the, the one other thing I would report back is that uh, on Friday, a little bit on Friday afternoon. And then on Saturday, I participated in an early learning conference, um. And uh, you know, was, was invited to uh moderate one of the panels at, at that conference. Made sure that um, a number of people who we have worked with on our allocations for childcare funding. Were aware that um, the deadlines to, to, to be putting, you know, putting money to work on projects are, are, are coming up. Um, and that they should be making sure that their, you know, their projects are, are moving along. Got a good report back on the OSU Cascades, the, the Little Kids Project. Uh, which sounds like they, they just secured an additional piece of federal funding, and they're gonna be able to move ahead pretty soon, but. Other projects, I, well, I also heard, I heard some more, a little bit more of an update on the Mountain Star project that we invested in. But, um, the projects, maybe not so far along. People got their heads up.
Good. Anything else?
Oh, the good news was at the core presentation, Jackie actually said that they've got their, I think, the go-ahead for the Simpson property. And it's now forty cottages, you know, originally it was only thirty, and they're keeping all the trees on the exterior, so. Great news, and I think seven um houses are going in on the popular, popular um street that we were at. Are they groundbreaking?
Yeah, yeah, for Simpson, they, they, they got, they got the, the formal approval from the Oregon, from OHCS. So that plus. Five hundred thousand dollars from the IPO for some of the transportation improvements, and some other pieces of funding have all come together. Sounds like they are gonna start working, so.
Okay, so seeing the updates, we'll go to an executive session, this will be uh your real proper. Switching gears. Is there a different Zoom, or we just stopped?
It's gonna be different Zoom, okay.